I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right. Thank you all for coming to the October 7th meeting. And thank you for the present attendance. And let's give some real prayers and thoughts to the people down in Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, everyone that was affected by that terrible hurricane. And obviously, another one is on its way. So they're gonna need lots of, lots of prayers and lots of help. First comment with just basically public comments on the agenda items, if anybody has any. Paul, you're handling it a little quicker.
Okay. Can I go up, can I tell you, because I have some papers, I have to lay out, ask questions about agenda items. We're not, I see the, the agenda was changed, right? We don't have any, no more or anybody's not coming?
No financials now, there was some scheduling conflicts. We're gonna do that the first meeting in November.
All right, the first thing I'm gonna do, first thing I'll do is item number two. Update regarding status of Spindler wells. Now, that relates to, see, I gotta lay this stuff out so I can see what I'm doing here. That relates to 144 resolution, no, that's one, that's, okay. If you look at, if you look on the resolutions, 24 dash oh one four four, that's, that's coming up, that's for a camera or hardware or whatever. The problem is, is that 24 oh one four four was used last month for the Spindler wells, for the roof on the DPW. There's a number of items on here that, that the, uh, resolutions have been used already. Resolution on, resolution 24 dash oh one thirty-five was also used on nine four for something else. It was used on nine four four, I'll tell you what it is. Resolution twenty-four, it's uh, one thirty-five is a bond resolution now, but it was used on, it was used on September fourth for, to approve a M A G proposal for stormwater management, MS four engineering report, of course, not to exceed seventy thousand. My point is, is a lot of resolutions on this, on the agenda that have already been used.
Okay.
And I only went back three meetings.
Well, going back to the previous meeting and, and see where the numbers.
Well, I went back to September fourth and September sixteenth.
Okay.
There's a lot of duplication and it's gonna, for historical archiving, it's gonna create problems.
Right, so what we'll end up doing is going back, finding the last accurate date. Christine, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I, one of the staff members is checking into it because she believes she may have used incorrect numbers, so she's already going back and looking through the numbers.
All right, good.
Okay, so we'll go back in a minute and just do the resolutions without the numbers.
So I'll continue.
Sure.
So regarding your, and then I guess it's part of the agenda, you and I text messages. Well, I texted you, but you didn't text me back, so I was just wondering if you, if you can answer those questions that we, regarding item number two, the Spindler wells. Uh, I know, we, we agree that we don't own a property.
Right.
My question to you was, why do we have a trailer on a property with equipment in it?
Well, the trailer has been there for
I understand, but
near ever.
But they don't own it anymore.
Who doesn't?
Baroda Realty owns it now.
Okay.
So it was there when Spindler was there.
Correct.
But they don't own it anymore.
Okay.
So, and
So all the equipment, all the equipment for those two wells, as you know, were and are connected to the two wells, so those are the mechanicals when, and when the Spindlers got the permit for potable water, that's when all that equipment was installed, and that's why
Whose wells are they?
Who they're gonna be, uh, Kabota, uh
Baroda.
Realty, yeah.
So why are we, why are we there?
Why are we there? Because it's a necessary water stream if it becomes an emergency situation.
Do we have, and again, that was
Yet of all, and I've mentioned previously, we have permission from D O H to use those wells when it's an emergency, all we have to do is
What about, what about the owner of the wells?
There is no issue with him whatsoever. And we are working on the side
Is there something in writing?
Huh?
Is there something in writing?
There's nothing in writing at this point. We are working on an agreement of sorts that will be able to incorporate those wells, um, electric, everything that is used down here.
How much did it cost, whatever repairs we did, how much did it cost us?
I'll check into that, but I wanna see the repairing of the piping, exterior structure, those things that were repaired that were leaking was in the neighborhood of eight thousand.
Okay, and, and who's insurance covers that trailer or anybody that gets injured down here, liability wise? Is that Baroda's insurance or is that our insurance?
I would assume it'd be his insurance.
And he's
That, that conversation
So say, you don't have anything in writing, so if tomorrow, but what if tomorrow Baroda says, oh, listen, you can't use those wells?
Well, then we don't use those wells. We don't use them. But I don't think that's gonna happen because the gentleman has been there, we've met with him.
Okay.
We've discussed the wells, he has no problem with us. When I called him, uh, when I got into office, we had a conversation, I asked him about the wells, and he was perfectly fine to continue as is.
All right, so, and then so if the Department of Health considers them usable wells, I mean, shouldn't they be secured somehow? The thing is wide open.
It is, it is wide open, and
Anybody know that? Is there a requirement for it to be secured?
I'm not aware of any requirement that says it needs to be secured. The trailer is secure.
But all of our other water facilities have fences around them with
I understand, and like I said a few minutes ago, we are in conversation with him regarding those wells and the future of those wells.
All right.
Okay, and I'll, I'll keep you updated as, as things develop.
Okay, on item, agenda item number eight, the wastewater treatment plant, was that, was that project subject to competitive bidding?
What number?
MS four reporting.
You think, MS four reporting is number eight?
Delaware.
You're talking about
Seven is the
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the original, I'm on the original agenda here. Okay, so number, uh, number seven.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, oh, was that subject to competitive, competitive bidding?
Yes.
It was. When would the, uh, when would the, uh, bids do?
Well, remember, we had mentioned two previous meetings that we went out to public bids.
Okay.
And during those two timeframes, no companies bid on the work.
Right.
Since then, we had four companies bid on the work. We went from the proposed roof with a, what am I gonna call, a slant, um, to a
Can you give me a date when the bids would do?
We can give you all that stuff, it was in the newspapers. We can certainly give you the original
Advertisement, and when they were gonna be open? Because at the last meeting, this, this resolution was tabled.
Correct.
Because we got a last minute bid. Meanwhile, the, the other bid was published in
No, the, the bid had been in, there was a question on the, on the bid itself.
That's not
Was the question.
I'm only telling you what we were told at the
At the last meeting, that's not what they said at the last meeting.
So they said?
We got, we got a last minute bid.
We were expecting a last minute bid.
We were expecting
Did we, did we
Well, we were expect, I'm sorry?
Did we get the last minute bid?
We got, we, well, when, when do we receive those? We have four. One actually came in yesterday, which was a one that I had mentioned earlier where we didn't, couldn't remember the name of the company. So all the bids are in.
So if we got a bid yesterday, the closing date was yesterday?
No. These are bids that were outside of the normal bid process because no bids came in.
All right.
Okay, so people either saw it or through word of mouth or whatever, we ended up receiving additional, we received bids. And we have the, the information on all four bids, and we have a, a low bid and we need to move forward and correct it.
But isn't there a process, you know?
That is a process.
A date, a date when they all come in?
Yeah, and they, we did, and
We got no bids.
And no bid came in, so
Yeah, but at the last meeting, there was a bid because there was an amount in the minutes.
And they tabled it because they felt that there was another bid coming in.
Yeah, but then other person can see that bid, because it's a competitive
No, they can't.
It was in the minutes, at the meeting.
We didn't make an announcement of how much those bids were costing?
It was in the minutes.
It was in the minutes.
It was in the minutes. So I, you don't have to make it at the last meeting, when you weren't in. You don't have to, you don't have to make an announcement, but if I just pick up the minutes and I say, oh, here's the, here's the bid, what was it, what was it, twenty-seven thousand? Somewhere around there, but it was written in the minutes.
Okay.
Or actually on the agenda. Not even in the minutes.
Well, because it was proposed at that point
It was on the
To be approved, and then at the meeting, the board decided to table it. And because they felt there was another bid coming in, that's what they did.
How did you get that feeling? That there was another bid coming? How did that feeling feel like?
Oh, it was really good.
I'm curious.
It was one of the wonderful moments of my life. I'm going by what they said at the meeting, that they felt that there was another bid coming in. I had
I guess that my lady felt it.
I had it on the agenda for that company to be approved.
Is yesterday's bid the lowest bid?
No. So the lowest bid is still the lowest bid.
I guess we'll see when we get to that item. Uh, item number, let me see if I got it right, because you moved names around here now.
Yep.
All right, item number fourteen, I just want, I was hoping, that's why I was hoping that the treasurer was gonna be here to, to explain it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it and I'm seeing if it makes sense to you, because I've read it probably seventy-five times. New York State Retirement System, employer contribution rate hyphen, increase from fifteen point two to sixteen point five percent of payroll employees retirement systems, thirty-one point two percent to thirty-three point seven percent. I have no idea what that means. What does that, what went up? And how much did it go up? And where is it, could, where can I see that? I wanted to ask the treasurer.
The, New York State posted it, I'll send you the information that they sent us.
But the way it's written here on the agenda, I mean
This is how it was written, it's just the New York State, it, uh, employer contribution for twenty-five, twenty-six, the rate is gonna increase from fifteen point two to sixteen point five.
Okay.
And for the payroll, for the E R S portion
Okay.
Is going from thirty-one point two to thirty-three point seven.
What, what's the dollar amount affecting
I don't know what that is.
Effect on like
I don't know
Treasurer doesn't know?
I'm sorry?
Treasurer doesn't know?
Right now, I would say she doesn't know. It's, well, we're, we're talking about it informing the public of
All right.
The increase, when we do the budget, that'll be figured into the budget.
We're gonna wait until we do the budget to figure out what this is gonna run us? When does this take effect? Is this gonna be, is this this year, it's gonna be in this year's budget?
It said twenty, it said twenty-five to twenty-six next year.
It doesn't say twenty-five and twenty-six yet, that's why I'm curious.
It says
Okay, again, I'm looking at the original, original minutes. I'm looking at the original minutes.
Twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yep, I, it does, on fourteen it does, on the new minutes, on the original one minutes, I'm asking now, absolutely not. Uh, fourteen, fifteen, on, uh, resolution, agenda item, resolution twenty-four dash one forty, uh, a step, oh, wait a minute, yeah, well, I guess that's the same, I don't know, again, that's
Just call that number, it doesn't matter what
That, that number, yeah, that number was, uh, is, it's not clear, what, is that for sixteen East Main, seven West Main, where is that for?
New signage?
No, it says new signage tenant application is
Right, so we have updated the signage application as well as the new tenant application.
Application itself, it's not for
It's not for any particular business.
Oh, wait a minute, oh, really, wait a minute now, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, I'm, I'm very glad you mentioned that.
Okay.
In fact, from, from August sixth until September twenty-fifth, it was actually updated three times.
It's gonna be constantly updated, yeah.
Well, three times, because I pulled a copy
Right.
On nine twenty-four
Right.
On nine twenty-five, it was updated.
Right.
Paul, can I explain something? Every time we find a little bit of kink in the language, we would say we need to change that, it could be as simple as one word that was changed.
Well, you changed major, major things in there.
Well, some, but sometimes it was literally just adding a word or two.
So my thing on the agenda items was item one forty, all right, to accept new signage application, we've never done that with the other two previous, uh, changes. The change, there was no paid on these, uh, the change that was revised on August sixth, I don't remember seeing anything on the agenda, and I looked through them, and then on nine seventeen, it was, it was revised again, uh, I didn't see anything on the agenda, and then nine twenty-four was revised again, by nine twenty-five.
And now we're at a point where we think we have it where it needs to be, and we are
But if you're doing a revision for this one, why hasn't, why wasn't it on for the other revisions?
Because there were two or three different applications coming in, and the information that was coming in, and as we were changing it, we were in midstream of making these modifications when the people were coming in. So we made the updates, know there were no resolutions to accept them, but now we're at a point that we feel we're at that level and we're gonna do it, and not to say it's not gonna be amended again based upon recommendations and, and things that we're doing as things are coming in.
Okay, I'm looking at the A R B right now.
Yes.
This is the A R B.
Correct.
The initials on the revision was M S, probably me. I don't think she's doing it on her own, why can't one of you guys put your, why don't you take credit or take account for doing the revisions?
Because she's the one actually
She's the one actually doing the work, but she's the clerk, she's gonna do that work.
Okay, so
Yeah, but who made those changes? Who decided on the changes?
The board decides, along with her and staff, we work together, they meet every Wednesday to talk about building issues and these processes, and we fine tune them as we go. She's the one that's in the work program, she's the one making the updates and the changes. Then it comes back to the board, we review it, along with them. Everybody's happy with it, then we're, we're at a point, we're sitting here tonight to make that
In relation to that, that change, one forty, and then, uh, in relation to that, then one forty-one, uh, back on July first, when the A R B was dissolved, a resident answered a question, saying, uh, question, is the local law being adopted due to lack of volunteers? Deputy Mayor Jacarusa responded, quote, "There were issues with scheduling of meetings and signage matters that the A R B would handle, but the village board can address these concerns," goes on to, "Once the moratorium is lifted, blah, blah, blah," but those are quotes. In my opinion, you guys are bullying new businesses, because anytime, any, even with the revisions that you made in here, if you go into the code, and, and I think with the tobacco, the tobacco shop that probably broke the straw, broke the camel's back, to speak, because they're not a black and white sign, so it didn't suit your, basically, what I read, what I heard in those minutes, was they're not voting the way we want them to vote, so we're gonna take this all.
No.
Absolutely not.
Nope.
Well, that's what I, that's what I read, I think, I think some other people might read it.
Absolutely not.
Because if you look in the code, the only thing that says it can't be any, you know, real loud colors or, or, uh
Well, that's true.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that you have to take colors, what the historic colors are. If you wanna do that in the future, fine, but you have to put it in the code.
And, and that's
And that is in the process right now.
That's in the process right now.
It's in the process, but it's not in the code.
Well, the historical color palette has been in there for
In where? In where?
In the application.
In the application, not in the code.
Because we're in the middle of revising
You can't, you can't make somebody do something that's not in the code. The building inspector approved it as code, as any of these signs, as it was, it was, it was in compliance with the co, code.
It's not my understanding.
And Paul
They're
Everybody, everybody that we have spoken to, all these businesses and business owners have worked with us. We had a sign meeting for the chamber and all the businesses several months ago to advise them of what we were trying to
What you want, now, what, you know, what's your, what's your
Well, you know what, we could have it a hodgepodge, right? You can just let it go full willy, like when you guys approved the Orange County Transit sign, I would say that's not the most beautiful sign I've ever seen in my life. Everybody hated it, right? So all we're trying to do is minimize the sign colors so that they're more to the historic values of what this village is asking for.
In, in someone, in someone's opinion
And all the businesses
It has to be in
There has to be an opinion.
Yeah, I know.
There has to be a law.
But it's not, right, there has to
And the laws are being written and
They're not there now, so how
I get it, but what we're doing is asking
You're asking, and
One at a time, please.
And the people don't know, so how can they, because you told them that this is what it is. When you read the application, it looks like you gotta do this. Now, the application I have, uh, it said lighting optional, now all of a sudden, lighting is mandatory.
No, it didn't have mandatory, it was optional.
Well, it says optional on this one, if you look on nine twenty-five, it doesn't
It is optional.
It doesn't indicate optional.
If you want to have, if you choose to have
It doesn't, when I read it, when I read the nine twenty-five revision, it sounds like you will have lighting.
Well, they're well aware of what their choices are, they come in and we meet with them, this isn't in any way how you make reference to a bullying situation.
I, I think it is because these people coming in don't know the, don't know the rules. Again, if it's not in the code
We are
If it's not in the code, you can't tell people
We are, we are sending letters out to the business owners, the landlords, so they're aware of it. We again had meetings for that public forum to advise them of what we were looking at at the sign was. We sat here with the planner, she showed fifteen different communities, were all different types of signage, and what our goals were. No one stood up and said, no way, we know
How come the tobacco shop's not black and white?
And we didn't have that in place then, it was the historical color palette, right? And so what happened was, we started to look at this and say, you know what? There's nothing in there that says of sign, uh, business can't choose five colors. Well, our planner's like, no, you, you don't want more than two colors, so we didn't, that wasn't in there. So that's the type of thing that we had added, that was one of the revisions, two colors, freestanding buildings, you have the choice
You can turn around tomorrow, you can turn around tomorrow and say, every new house that turns over on Deckard Drive has to have a black front door and white shutters.
Paul, we are in the middle right now
I'm saying, I'm just saying
Of having a designated, declaring a designated
You don't have it in the code.
District, because our code, we're working with the planner, we're in the
Listen, I think we restructured that court. You know it's not in, in the code, we explained to you that the codes are being rewritten, we're explaining to you that we met with the business people, everybody's on board with this except potentially you at this point.
You didn't meet with new business owners, you're not with the current business owners, you've got new businesses
And that's who we met with
We had a brand, we had new businesses come to that meeting.
We have brand new businesses here.
One who's about to
Okay, brand new, but now, like, guys that are opening now, you got
And we're meeting with them.
Continuously.
Yeah, and if you, and if we get into the meeting, we're gonna pass those A R B signs, so
I'm not, it's not a question whether you're gonna pass it or not, it's the question that it's not in the law.
The way it's, the way it's being
Right, so
It cannot be right now, because we're in the moratorium, we're in the middle of revising.
Right now, I'm gonna start this tomorrow in town, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the, the code and see what's in the code and see what's allowable on my sign.
And when you tell
And if you go to our code, you will see there's a banner up there saying that, under construction.
Right, and we point you to this application, and all that information is there. That's, that's the way we're handling it right now. And everybody's been on board, so I don't, you know, if, if the argument wants to be made, I think we've covered it, and if you wanna ask the next
I think that three revisions within a month is, you know, a little, a little, uh
Listen, Paul, there's nothing, we're, we're trying to do the best thing we can to be the ac, most accurate and give people a clear, concise application. If that's bad, then shame on us, but I don't think so. This process has been working up into the point of what you're trying to explain and, and I don't know what else, but at the end of the day, everybody that's walked in this door, from the new spa to the Greek gyro place, to the gentleman Dan who's opening up a retail shop at the old Chase Bank, have all been here and have all been working together. Leslie, the owner of Stafford Building, is the same thing. I don't, you know, we're, we want more businesses than
Are they bidding, you talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, talk to them.
I did.
Okay, great, I
I guess he told you something different than he told me. So, who did you miss that?
We, we had the conversations.
I had a conversation too.
You wanted white oos neck, that was the big issue, you wanted white oos neck.
And I just, I don't, I don't know, when I drive through a village, the last thing I notice is the signs. I, so I don't know, everybody said they hated the Orange County Transit sign, but I, I don't know, I didn't hear that.
Wow.
We didn't see it on social media. Wherever he else goes.
One of your board members, every meeting he would bring it up and say he was miserable with it, and that shouldn't have happened, your board member.
Okay, again, like you, one, one opinion.
And there is a sign law, and it wasn't even following the sign law, so, you know, we could split these hairs all night long, but at the end of the day, again, from everybody that's walked into this building and, and as far as a new applicant or a new business, we're working with them to get them on board and get them up and running as quickly as we can.
All right.
That's, that'll, that'll end
So that's all I have for the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go wait till later.
No worries.
Sean Hagerty for Bellwood Drive, I'm gonna ask questions off the original agenda that I got on Sunday.
I don't have that number.
Two meetings ago, you mentioned that you possibly be given raises to the P D with some of the money from the four point five million dollar loan. Do you truly believe that's fiscally responsible? We'll give them a raise, we'll have our taxes raised the next year, and then we'll be paying interest on the money that we give the P D, take out that loan.
There, we, we propose a raise, but it's coming from this budget that the chief had put together for this fiscal year. That money is not part of deficit money.
You stay there, we'll come out of probably two million dollars left in the bond we have, two meetings ago.
Okay.
Is that fiscally responsible? Given money that we're paying interest on for a raise, which they deserve?
Well, if I said that, it might have been an error, I'd have to go and listen to
You said, I just listened to it again on tape.
He has his scheduled budget that he put together for this year, that's the increases that we're going by.
Not taking it from the loan money?
Right.
Okay. The other one was, what I asked about the price of the gentleman doing the water meters?
Yep.
Was this pension money, the increase, not the increase, but the pension retirement system counted in on that?
It has nothing to do with the H two O employees.
Has nothing to do, I'm not asking about H two O, I'm asking about the D P W employees. This would be one of the things other than that the village is paying for employees, was that all added in? That's what I'm trying to find out.
This was not added in because we just were notified of this. This was not added in because we just were notified of this.
Well, yeah, but you've been paying the fifteen percent.
What, whatever the limit is right now, that, that has been calculated and that's what we'd be paying.
That was in the fifty-eight dollars?
You know, our, our insurance payments are somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand a month.
So I'm asking about the individuals' money, maybe uniform money, their pension money, eyeglass money, do we give them other money, uniforms? Was that added in with the fifty-eight dollars that you told me, that it costs per hour per employee?
Yes, because we got all those numbers that time from Leslie.
Right, Leslie was close to the, I wanted to ask her.
And everything.
That's right, you're right, you're right, so that was all, that was, that was salary plus benefits, fifty-eight dollars, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully I make the medium and cheese here, the ask her.
Yeah, please, absolutely, thank you. Benny?
Uh, resolution one thirty-seven, the LED, LED lighting at the pickleball court.
Yes.
Nineteen thousand, was that put out to bid?
Yes.
When did that go out to bid?
Uh, a few months ago, month ago.
I, I don't remember who should approve and who was doing that then.
We had quotes from a company called RTG, uh, Anytime Electric and American Electric. Those are the three quotes.
And who got that then?
I'm sorry?
Who got it?
Who, who, who's gonna win it, who won it is American Electric.
Okay, did we start the work on that already, because I saw people there this week.
They were doing work on the, um, conduits on the poles, that's about it, they haven't ordered anything, they were just cleaning up the poles.
Okay, how much are we all in to the pickleball courts as, as we speak, the paving, the fencing, the striping, the twenty thousand for lighting and nineteen thousand for lighting, what are we all in for pickleball?
Is it about sixtyish? Yeah, let's say about sixty?
For the current, what we have now?
For the three quarters.
And you're, you're about to put another.
You quoted much higher than that previous to this occasion.
Well, if more, there was more money spent on paving because we did Woodfield as well.
The question was about pickleballs.
Well, if you want to exactly, I'll, I'll add it up at the next meeting and I'll give you a thought.
I won't be at the next meeting, but I'd like to see it.
Yeah, well, I'll email it to you, send to me.
I'll read it on the minutes.
And was that budgeted money for these pickleball, are we budgeting for pickleball, or is that just covering out parks?
No, this is all part of recreation, which was part of the money that's, we, we received from Reaver.
Okay.
And Coach USA.
Okay.
That's the recreation money.
Are, are we spreading it out to the other parks that we have?
Well, the memorial park, we've been working on a grant, uh, with the Lions Club, New York State Dazning. So all that park improvement has been from the Lions Club, and we're doing the insulation work.
The park at the end of Burn Allen, you know, could use some help as well.
At where?
At Burn Allen Park.
What is Burn Allen? I'm sorry?
Playground for the kids, does the kids play?
Yes.
You know, next to the pickleball right there, you know, four or five, could use some, you know, we're spending all this money, we should spread the wealth to the other parks within the village. Um, resolution one forty-five was tabled last meeting when you were here, um, the thirty-four thousand five hundred for camera. How many, I asked last meeting, how many cameras?
Okay.
What type of camera? Who's monitoring the camera? Cloud base, is it gonna be a server somewhere?
Mm-hmm, so, okay, so it is a server, it'll be housed at the police department, it'll be on a, uh.
How many cameras?
Initially, it'll be two, the places that we're gonna put cameras are the three parks, sewer plant, water plant.
Oh, that's not this camera, where's these cameras gone?
These two were planned for descent to, uh, two oh eight ninety-four, EJ's Square, when we put up those two poles for lighting. And another one would be in the municipal parking lot. And the L lights will come, we're in the process of installing a light at the memorial park. Uh, Burn Allen will follow, Woodfield will follow.
Light, you said a light? A light?
I'm sorry, camera. Well, we are putting a light up at the memorial park as well, just because the parking lot is dark. Um, so we're gonna put an LED light up there just to shine on the parking lot at night, because people are, had emailed and said that they walk around, they take their dogs and they walk around the park and just that and the other things.
So these cameras aren't monitored, correct?
Yes, they are.
By who?
By the police department, so they will be running, and if they wanna see something, they.
So they're not gonna be monitored, it's gonna store it on a server, if they wanna go back, they can see something.
No, they can look at it live if they wanted to.
If they want.
Yes.
So he's not gonna have a designated person watching the cameras?
No, we don't have a, a budget for a, uh, a camera person just, uh, looking at the parks.
What was the criteria to grant money, to spend that said money?
I'm sorry?
What was the criteria for that grant money to be spent?
Well, the chief went out and he can probably explain it, but he went out for, um, a grant for police department and other pieces of equipment and other things.
What was the criteria of the spend, did it have to be just a camera?
Chief did.
It's a, it was a statewide voluntary investment in technology grant, so you could buy computers, cameras, license plate cameras, any type of technology. We applied for, in our application for cameras for the parks, park cameras, license plate readers, the server, uh, well, the server part of the system. Um, and that's what we were approved for, where some departments put in providing cameras, for example, like neighbor, they put in providing cameras and license plate readers, we were approved for that.
Yes, I just feel like, two cameras, thirty-four thousand, I, I feel like.
Well, most of it's for the server.
I got you, but I, I just feel like downtown right now, there's so many cameras downtown personally, within all the businesses that they would have access if they needed to.
And I could touch on that real quick. We need the server first.
I agree.
Okay, so the server is gonna be housed in the police department. We identified the board and I identified at least nine different locations, we can't do them all at once, we have to start the easiest one, is EJ and McLaughlin Square because they're putting poles up there. The next one is either gonna be, we have them listed, but DPW's gonna have one, Memorial Park, those are our, the ones we really want. There's challenges with every single one, internet, power, you can't just put a camera on a pole. You gotta, we gotta trench it, we waited till after nine eleven to do Memorial Park because you don't want, you know, messy for the public. So I, I believe DPW's working on that now, to run the data cables, so that's our, that's one of our main priorities. Memorial Park, I was hoping to have the cameras in place for Wichita Bill and at least for the Christmas parade. Yes, so Ben, you're right, there are cameras in the center of town, but they're not our cameras, we don't, they don't have to allow us access to them. We do get, we do have a lot of good relationship with the businesses, but, uh, for example, somebody stole something from, told us to the board last week, somebody stole something from Stewart's, a wallet. They walked across the street, we had no vision of them, we go to Bubble Basins just because that's the only business that has a good camera in it. Boom, behold, they went inside Bubble Basins, we were lucky by that, but we had to wait for the owner to come, we had to, we had to wait for things to come where, where we could just look at the cameras and be like, okay, they went in this car. Um, there's definitely delay, if you, you know, if you use a business and they're on vacation, the owner, the owners are not working, it's, it's always a, a back and forth. It's not like current, sometimes stuff is time sensitive, hit and run accident, you wanna catch them driving, you don't wanna catch them three hours later. Uh, it's really important for us to have cameras in the center of the village, it's something we've really wanted for a long time. Um, I think it's really gonna improve, um, safety. And so, so we'll, we'll be able to see, especially we, we have the Christmas parade in Wichita Bill, I think it's gonna help us. And I, I, I do think about thirty-four thousand, most of that is the server.
Yep.
And it's up to thirty-four, we're gonna start piecemeal on the parks, Memorial Park is a big one we've really been waiting for, and unfortunately it's just taken a long time, different challenges, internet and power really, so that's gonna be our next, our next thing, as soon as we can get that, that'll be next. And then we'll do the rest of the parks, one by one.
Thank you.
Just one more question, uh, one thirty-eight, resolution with the part-time village building inspector, are we losing another one?
Yes.
Yes.
Because of the revolving door.
Well, she never got off the ground, he had some, uh, medical injury things and, uh, it just never came to fruition, so we are, we're letting him go. And, uh, right now, uh, the building inspection or inspectors from the town are doing a really, really good job. And, uh, things are getting cleaned up, safety inspections are being done, and, um, we're, we're very happy with that, so. Um, and they're doing a lot of work, um, our Wednesday meetings and doing code changes and things like that to make, uh, to make the processes a little easier. And they're working with Bonnie, Amy Doris through zoning and, and other changes, so it's been, it's good. So right now, I don't believe that the board is gonna be thinking about hiring anybody at this point, we're just gonna work with the, uh, two that we have, potentially three when Dave is around if he's needed. But otherwise, things are, things are running smoothly. Paul?
One more thing, Paul, line ten fifty-three lane, one more thing, because I got the new, uh, revised agenda here. The tabled motion from last year to authorize the hiring of ABC Contracting for the emergency roof replacement at the village wastewater treatment plant and a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Now, at twenty-four, one forty-five, he, he kicked it up seven grand.
That was.
Thirty-four thousand five hundred.
Right.
The original estimate remains the same, that was for additional, um, a warranty.
Seven thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not cheap, and all of them, all of them have, uh, put that on there, so of course.
I re, I would recommend that you vote no on this resolution and go back to the twenty-seven thousand five hundred.
Well, we don't have to go with the warranty, but we thought it was a good idea, only because if the company goes out of business for whatever reason in the next twenty years, this company's been in business for fifty years. Um, if they do go out, then we have nobody other than them to make the warranty repairs.
They don't offer a warranty, I mean, when you build a house.
Within the twenty-eight, twenty-eight five is a warranty for them for the next twenty years to take care of the roof, they'll come out every three years, I believe it was.
Twenty-seven five?
And they'll inspect that.
And what do we get for thirty-four five?
The top, it is, the additional money is for the manufacturer's warranty, so if there is a failure, they're responsible to cover it. If this, if say the ABC goes out of business or anybody goes.
We didn't know this, we didn't know this last month?
No, it was a question that came up during their meeting, and came up afterwards, and, and the warranty question came up, and that's why we went back to all of the vendors and asked them about their, uh, the manufacturer's warranties for the roof.
Do we need it?
I'm sorry?
Do we need it?
If the company gets out of business, that's a safe, safety net, so you still have the manufacturer's warranty in case the company.
Three seven thousand dollars is a lot for a warranty out of.
Well, it's for twenty years, I think it's worth it, and, you know, don't expect the company to go out of business, but if they do, and you have a leak, then where are you? And for seven grand over si, uh, twenty years, I don't think it's a terrible investment.
What's the value of repairs at twenty years? You know, a lot of times you buy a warranty and it diminishes down every year, is it full coverage at twenty years, is it half coverage at ten years, what is it?
Whatever, whatever the damage would be, it would be repaired at that cost in time, there's no dollar amount on their warranty.
It's a hundred percent cover to the roof.
It said manufacturer's warranty, twenty years.
Manufacturer warranty.
Right.
Manufacturer defect also, it's only for a defect in the interior.
Well, if, if it fails, then they're responsible for it, correct? Correct.
It's tall, right?
Rubber, rubber.
It's, it's a concrete roof, and then by the time they get done, there's insulation, there's multiple processes obviously to it.
Rubber, I don't know, it's like it's higher almost.
But at the end of the day, they'll end up, um, taking care of the low valleys, high valleys, get everything straightened out, and we're gonna do a water test, um, with a fire truck or something, we'll run water across it to make sure everything is draining off the roof the way it should be, and, uh, they'll certify that. And, um, I, I even believe the manufacturer representative will come out and also verify it, and then when that's done, and like I said, there'll be, it'll be three years till we get the roof. Okay, any else, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. So none of this has been hit, so we'll just, um. Okay, so just a, an update regarding our water, sewer and taxes, that now we'll be able to accept credit cards at our, uh, window, um, effectively immediately. So that's functioning, anything you wanna add to this, Susan?
No, it, it is not for building payment fees, that's the only thing that cannot get paid at that window. And we can, we had to, we could put checks directly in also at the window, through somebody's account, so it just, some residents just prefer to come down and pay, and that's fine. It just makes it easier for them when they're there and they wanna take care of it with a credit card, there is a fee.
Thank you, um, I think we spoke enough about Spindler Wells, unless anybody had anything new. Um, number three, we did, uh, receive the three hundred and nine thousand dollars from Senator Scoofus in New York State, and, um, we thanked him very much. Uh, everyone had received a letter of your thoughts to that. Uh, number four, donating, uh, tree planting, if anyone's still interested in being involved in that process, uh, purchase a tree for a loved one or for any other particular reason, um, you can please, you know, call down here, speak to Megan, she's taking care of, uh, the internal paperwork on that. Uh, she'll give you the cost of the tree and our date now to have, uh, the planting along Ahern, it will be, uh, November second, starting at about nine thirty in the morning. And anybody is welcome, but generally speaking, since the families are buying the trees, we're gonna have the holes pre-dug, and the families can kinda set the tree, you know, put the dirt around it, and, um, we'll have an inventory sheet of every tree and which tree kind of belongs to that family member, that family, so. If you're interested, please let us know, um, we're beginning some work down at EJ McLaughlin Square regarding the parking lot. Um, we're getting, doing it very early in the morning, up until about eleven o'clock before the stores open up, so we're not interfering with their business, day-to-day stuff. Uh, so the deal right now is that we're trying to skim off about the first one or two codes, take care of the pop holes. And plan would be, uh, working with the towns to have that area paved.
We still gotta get the stump out.
Yeah, and there's miscellaneous work around, we have a stump from a tree that needs to come out, but there's a gas line that runs underneath it, at some depth that we're trying to determine. So we won't be backhoeing it out, um, for obviously reason, for obvious reason. Next is Lincoln Drive, that project has been completed, um, work came out really good, the, um, curbs and sidewalks, everything that was replaced, eight aprons, um, a lot of residents are very satisfied with the work, so that's down and complete, so that's good news. Um, we, sewer treatment plant, we have discussed, and so we're prepared to vote on that this evening. New York State MS four reporting, um, has gotten very, very complicated now through the DEC, and we have, uh, submitted our initial, or actually the initial work was due in January, that never got submitted, um, until recently because of the changes in this process of MS four that Susan and I went to.
I've got to two of them already.
Yeah, we're almost, uh, almost half-understanding this stuff, um, most of it does require engineering, and, um, we're reaching out, or we have an agreement, uh, with, um, McOeyhauser and Netzel to handle our MS four.
Maybe explain to them what, what is MS four, I'm, I'm sure Paul.
Well, MS four is basically all stormwater runoff, so anything, it's really a lot harder for communities that are in the midst of building projects, if they're building warehouses or new developments, all that stormwater management needs to be, docu, uh, documentation needs to be done, needs to be submitted part of the plans to DEC. Um, lucky for us, we don't really have any construction going on at the moment, so it was a vanilla type of submission, and, uh, but that's MS four, and it's really, they, they look for it, uh, quarterly reports, there's a six-month report, and then there's an annual report, I think comes up, uh, by December, but it's not due until April, so. It got, it, we put more work, uh, taking it off the DEC, I believe, the way everybody's been explaining it, all the engineering firms that we have met through the processes, so. But we're moving forward and that, all, all that paperwork has been done. Uh, the other thing that we've been working on is Orange County Emergency Management Plan Review, uh, we are part of that review, we have received our information that was submitted back in twenty eighteen. And now we're just in the process of getting that information updated and back to the county for their review. Uh, this coming Saturday is our After Dark Wichita Bill, which starts at five and to ten, so everyone is welcome to come down and enjoy the evening. And for children, uh, after, after dark, they call it, is on Sunday the thirteenth at Burn Allen Park, from twelve PM to four PM, so. I'm sorry, before dark, I'm sorry, thank you.
Any road closure for that?
Chief, we, uh, at Burn Allen? No.
Burn Allen, uh, Ahern will be closed between Revere and Dekker about ten o'clock in the morning, there'll be no parking on the right-hand side of Revere as you go up.
Right.
And for after dark, there'll be no parking along East Main Street in front of the businesses, after twelve, EJ McLaughlin Square at twelve, and Municipal Lot behind Alada's at twelve.
Thanks, Steve. Um, our well levels today were at twenty-five feet, six inches, so they're holding at that level. Uh, we have received a grant for one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from a William G. Pomeroy Foundation, uh, for an historical marker, our art historian, Jeanie Persuable, submitted the application, and a check will be forthcoming, and we could put that to whatever historical signs she had in mind.
I think it was Dwayne or Maysfield?
Oh, by Maysfield?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, 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 so next is the, happened on Friday, but the Orange County Motor Vehicle Mobile Unit was here, and, um, Chris, pretty busy as usual? Yeah, a lot of people take advantage of that. Uh, fourteen, we discussed that a little bit, we'll get more information and I'll pass that along for anybody who's interested in more details and how we get it. Uh, let's see, the AIM thing that we had talked about earlier in the year when it came to budgetary time, uh, that was the municipal aid payment. As we had stated, um, we, the village receives thirteen thousand dollars annually, and we did receive that check. Um, haven't heard much of what's going on since they're kind of in recess at the moment, but this was one of the big items that between the Senate and the Assembly wanted to have, um, budget quite a bit of money to redo this municipal aid project, um. How this payment system works, it seems that there's no particularly asked people about it, and they don't have rhyme or reason on how get, you know, one community gets $250,000 and another one gets $25,000, or someone like us gets $13,000. So more to come on that as they get back into session. Trees for Tribs that we did down at Soul Park last Saturday was a really great evening or a great day. We had a lot of volunteers, maybe four years or so. DEC was there, we had the holes pre-drilled. They laid out all the plantings and trees. There were 117 of them. And we, and all those volunteers got everything in the ground, stakes, tubes, within about an hour. So it was good. They really did fantastic work, and we're watering them every other day. And it will be about five years, three to five years, before the plants start to come through and out those tubes. And then at that point, the tubes would get removed. So we got some time for that. Also, we're trying to get people out and to use that park. We did leave some park benches down there. We have about four, and there were two benches made by a scout, a Girl Scout troop that are down there that will remain down there for a few more weeks, and then we're gonna bring them in and refinish them, sand them and so forth, because the varnish and stuff on them have gotten worn away. So we want that to be fixed up. And there is a group from everybody that's been working on the Soul Park project is they're actually trying to arrange some kind of a weekend, Saturday or Sunday, having some music down there. Just to kind of start using the park. Of course, we're still waiting on FEMA to make the approvals of our application. And we have an engineering firm, a hydraulic firm, working on the floodway and floodplain calculations that are required by FEMA. So as that comes around, we'll keep you updated on that as well. Chris, anything you want to add on the Trees for Tribs?
We covered it all.
Okay.
The ROTC again to.
Yeah, GPW did a great job. And Jean Galley and all the volunteers arranging everything. It was a really, really good time with the ROTC Girl Scouts. Just regular, you know, good old residents just coming down to help. That was good. Okay. We're on the end. Is there anything anyone else wants to bring up, discussion with?
They're reading meters this week.
So, yeah. That time again. Starting with, first is a resolution. I'll leave the number up for now, but it's a bond resolution of the Village of Washingtonville, New York, adopted on August 7, 2023, and amended on October 7, 2024, authorizing liquidation accumulated deficits of the General Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, and Capital Project Fund, including the remaining principal amount of any outstanding budget deficit and/or revenue anticipated notes. Stating estimated costs of liquidating such deficits is $4.5 million appropriate in $4.5 million for such purposes and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $4.5 million in bonds of the village of, I'm sorry, of the village for such purposes. Can I have a motion? Have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next is a resolution to accept PKF O'Connor and Davies' audit for the fiscal year of ending of 2021 and 2022. Have a motion?
Motion.
Questions?
Are they online?
Yes.
They are all on the website?
Let's see. And no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
You don't think? Yeah, they are. I think it's, I went up there, I was on that, I was on budget yesterday, the day before. And I didn't see them, so, yeah.
If they're not, let me know, but I believe I sent them over.
Yeah. Okay. Next is a resolution to accept the resignation of part-time village building inspector Scott Cooper effective this date, Monday, October 7.
Motion.
Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. A late addition is to accept the resignation of clerk Eileen Lopez.
Already?
Yeah, she needed a full-time job. So.
What do you guys do to these people?
Working hard, man.
I don't know, man.
Yeah. She, she needed, personal issues, but she needed a full-time job. So.
That'd be Christine.
And that was effective on October 4th of 2024. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Susan, have a second? Steve? Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And we are actively pursuing to refill that position. So, do you know anybody? Did that get uploaded on Indeed?
I'll turn on it, I'm working on it.
Okay. Okay. This one here? Yeah, LED. Okay, thank you. Resolution to approve the installation of the LED lighting for the pickleball court located at Vern Allen Park, at a cost not to exceed $19,000. Again, three quotes came in, was RTG. At 22,773, American Electric, at $19,000, and Anytime Electric did not submit, even though they had shown some interest. Okay. So with that, we'll have a motion to accept American Electric as the winning bid for the replacement of LED lighting at the pickleball courts.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to accept and revise the building, village building permit fee schedule and building department application and permit. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Steve? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that, the building department fee schedule, when is that gonna be updated? 10/1/22 is on the website.
Well, we just approved it tonight. So it'll get uploaded.
The new, the new ARB application's updated.
Well, again, that's on tonight.
Yeah, we just did it tonight. All that, all these forms will be uploaded to the website.
9/25 revision of the ARB permit is already updated.
Right, now we're gonna, there'll be a revision from tonight, 10/7.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Yeah, we did three, right, I think?
Four now.
Four, okay. So we're good with that. Next is to accept the new signage, new tenant application as approved by the village building department. Have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next is a resolution to accept the Architecture Review Board application for Greed Brothers. Have a motion?
Motion.
Don, second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Call to Megan tomorrow, she can reach out to these guys. Okay, next, a resolution to accept the Architecture Review Board application for Crisomatica LLC. Fire safety inspections are scheduled for Wednesday, October 9 to 12 noon. Have a motion to accept the sign up.
Well, we have to.
With the motion and then discussion?
Well, the building permit process will take care of that, of the sign itself and the brackets. We're just doing the sign.
Yeah, the signs.
Right, that has to be.
And that's part of the sign, that's part of the permit that will go into the.
Okay, I thought we were gonna have that as part of our motion tonight to amend that.
So we amend the resolution that the sign length needs to be cut two feet and that there is a current bracket on the existing building that needs to be removed. So the sign will be the proper distance off the building face according to our local code.
It's on the old chase bank, that protrusion from the old sign has to come down. So the new sign to be mounted will protrude four inches from the stretch.
Uh, let's see, okay. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to authorize a surplus of the Village Police Department 2001 ATV and to be placed the item on auction. We have the letter from the chief. Can I ask for a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second?
Second.
Question, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution to approve a five-year extension on time clocks plus at a cost not to exceed $4,028.33. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Steve, second? Any questions, comments on that?
I have a question on that. Is that price for the five years or per year?
That is five years. Yeah, five months. I'm sorry, five, yeah, five years. Sorry, can I say something? Five years, I'm sorry. And the grand total for that is $4,228. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolution to authorize the purchase of the hardware and cameras for the Village of Orangeville for Metro. Sound Pro's at a cost not to exceed $34,500. Funds regarding said purchase will receive from a New York State Police Department grant. We have received two other quotes on top of that. Again, theirs came in 34.5. Dynamic reductions came in at $53,030. And Abra Pro installations came in at $57,212.60. So the resolution would be to award the bid to Metro Sound Pros at 34.5. Have a motion, please? Second? Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to approve the sewer plant renovations to ABC Roofing at a cost not to exceed Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
I'm gonna recuse, please.
It's gonna be a four, zero. Okay. Next is a resolution to approve pickleball, pickleball court area paving not to exceed $11,900 for the other half of the court. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Steve, second? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is to resolution to authorize special counsel to represent the village in litigation.
61 East Main.
For 61 East Main Street.
Well, I could discuss in just a second. So the federal suit continues and is covered by insurance. They also very recently filed an Article 78 in state court against the village and the trustees. Because they do not seek monetary damages, insurance does not cover it. So we are going to be handling the Article 78.
So going, going back to my original question at that meeting, it is gonna cost us something.
The Article 78, well, yes. You just mentioned the federal.
At that, we didn't know about this.
Yeah.
Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, go to Don. Any other thoughts, questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. That was the resolution regarding litigation. So next is resolution to authorize the approval to modify the 24, 2024, 2025 budget to enable Village Treasurer to make necessary transfers within the General Fund. Can I have a motion, please? Steve, second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Resolution to authorize budget transfers and amendments is necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds and to pay village warrants. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, public comment?
Sean? Sean, I have a couple. One is the pickleball fence is falling down again. At the existing pickleball court. All right? The rocks that they put over the pipe down at Vern Allen, where the pipe comes through, are being tossed right back into the stream again, which is blocking the outflow of water. The three benches, they may want to put them on a large cement pad. It looks like the granite one was hit, and it's coming apart. There's only one thing over there that could hit it.
You mentioned the granite?
The black one. I guess it's granite, it could be marble, it could be whatever.
Someone in the middle now? Because there was.
Yes, it's in the middle. But maybe they should all be put up on a nice overside pad, so the lawnmower or whatever hit it doesn't have to get that close to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Done?
Yeah.
Not to beat a dead horse, but could I ask the attorney, the village attorney, a question?
Question?
Regarding, regarding that topic that I was talking about. If something is not in the code today, can the ARB tell somebody how they have to do something?
Yes.
How?
Planning boards do it all the time. They set conditions, they set reasonable conditions on applications.
But if it's not in the code, so I'm saying, so then, then they can, a board can mandate anything they want.
And that often happens, yes.
Really?
Yes. Zoning, zoning boards, planning boards, they condition variances, they condition site plan approvals, special use exceptions on, on the applicant doing certain things that aren't in the code. Happens all the time.
My other, my second thing is, I sent you guys an email tonight, the staff tonight, I, this is the last minute. I wanted you to have it before the meeting. I don't know if you saw it or not. It was a photo, it's a photograph of a tanker truck at the Spindler Hydrant. Very clearly in the photo, one side of the hydrant has a meter on it. The other side of the hydrant does not have a meter on it. That side had a hose going from the hydrant directly into the truck. So I'm saying, we're giving out free water. That water is not accounted for. How many thousands of gallons of water have we given away? And furthermore, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the board if, if. And I, furthermore, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the board if, uh, if they've ever checked that boat down there. There's no regulation. This is what our point is over and over every meeting. There are no regulations down there. For an example, on May thirtieth, guy named Ken pulled out three thousand gallons at three fifty PM. Ken also pulled out six thousand gallons at three fifty-four PM. And Ken pulled out two thousand gallons at four PM. This guy, Ken's a busy guy. In a matter of, you know, six minutes, he pulls out eleven thousand gallons of water. That's what he wrote in the book. I don't know, I can't go by this book. This book is garbage. There's no regulation, there's no oversight on who's taking this water. And that picture that you have, if, when the resident sees that, that picture of that hose going into the truck, they're gonna have to say, we're giving it away?
No, they're not giving it away, cause they're, they were paying for it.
It, how do we, how do we not?
How do you know?
How do you know that? How do you say that? Oh my god. I've been questioning this every meeting. They're paying.
How do you know he's not? And, and, all right, so we can back up just a second. The, the other side of that hydrant meter, my understanding, broke. There's a new meter being ordered.
But there's only one meter, only one meter on it. If there's, if the meter is broke, then shut down.
Correct.
They don't take water. It has to be. There's no, there's no oversight on that water leaving this building. I'm sorry.
Well.
How much water's been hijacked from us? That's basically what it is.
We depend on.
That's what, I don't know how big those tankers are, but if he's writing down four thousand gallons, he's taking seven or eight.
Most of the tankers, I believe, they have their, through three thousand gallons.
Six thousand.
Six thousand gallons.
Both sides, fifty-three foot tanks.
So he's writing whatever he wants now.
The Spindler ones are six thou, up to six thousand gallons.
Okay, so if he's not metering the water, how does he know he's putting three thousand gallons in there? Is he eye-walling? He's coming off, he's, look at the photos when you, when you get a chance.
I saw your photos, I see.
It's coming, there's no way that, it, it, he's, he can write down anything or nothing. No accountability. That's what I'm talking about.
And I hear what you're saying.
But we're not doing anything. That's the problem. I've been questioning this every day, every meeting. No accountability, there's no cameras, and back to my question.
We're back to the cameras. We've, we're not gonna, not even gonna entertain it because you know what's going on with the cameras. We told you cameras are going in.
Then he cannot get water unless there's a village employee there. You cannot sell, we're in the water business of selling water.
Right.
Have accountability. You don't even know what he's putting in his truck. That's what I've been bringing up every single meeting. And back to my last question at the last meeting, why does Spindler have his own lock on our gate?
It's not his lock.
It is his lock. It's a Spindler lock. It's his lock. They have the code for it. It's his lock.
Lock being on that gate.
There's two locks on that gate. Our lock and Spindler's lock.
The other one wins the world.
That's, that's false. It's Spindler's lock. Go down there, Tom.
I will.
All right? Unacceptable. You should not have access to the D W. I think I was wrong anyhow.
Okay.
On the book itself,
Okay.
it says Washingtonville Water Transportation. Sounds like company. I, I know, that's what it says in, in the book. Has anybody looked at the book? Read the book?
I've seen the book. I've seen the entries in the book.
Somebody should be monitoring it every time they're writing it. Back in the day, when, when Spindler would sell pool water, and I'm thinking that those two thousand, three thousand amounts were for pool water, cause it was on May thirtieth, uh, I'm thinking that those two thousand, three thousand amounts were pool water. That's our drinking water. Spindler used to use the non-potable water.
Right.
For the pool. That's our drinking water that they're putting in the pools. That's too valuable.
Well, I don't know what they're doing with it.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that you're always taking, you're always taking two thousand.
Of, of the tankers, so you know where they're going.
Because there's no accountability. That's why we're taking pictures. We're selling water with no accountability.
We'll take care of it then.
Yeah, all right. I've been saying this every meeting, we're not taking care of it.
Well, this happens to be something new because there wasn't meter on it. When I heard that somebody was on our property taking pictures of a tanker and taking pictures of a guy.
You don't need to be on the property. You just be outside, keep watching.
You got, you, you made personal or you made a call to Chris Finnegan after our last meeting, after we told you what we told you, and he explained what they do and how they do it.
And he's not a village, and I explained to him, he's not a village employee. He's not a village employee.
He's a contractor and.
A contractor does not, he does not work for the village. Spindler is not contracted through the village. Are, do we have a contract with Spindler?
No, Chris Finnegan.
I'm talking about Spindler. I know.
I know, I know.
And I explained to Finnegan that.
No, he's not.
He's not.
Right.
A village employee.
But don't make it seem like they're not paying anything for this water because they're.
He's not paying enough.
So we're not, well.
He's not paying enough. We don't even know. We don't know how much money they're taking out. That's the problem.
Okay, so that's the problem.
I've been down a few weekends' time on my bicycle and they were only hooked up to the, the one line with no meter. That meter's been broken for months.
Why not?
They're never, so you have no idea what they're taking.
I knew that.
And, and you.
And you should've shut it down right at that point.
And I'll give you the answer to that.
I just found out last week. And I wanted meters installed.
Then why was there two hoses on there? Who put the second hose on there? Was that Spindler?
The reason why they're not going through the meter is because the pressure from that hydrant is too strong for that meter and it can't handle it and it goes so slow through the trucks. That's why there's two hoses on there. That's why. That was the answer I got. Unacceptable.
Okay, well, too bad then.
Take the other hose off and go through the meter.
They'll have to use it through there, absolutely. I don't care if it takes all day.
How many gallons of water?
We'll see.
Have gone through.
You know what? The good test is, here's a good test, right? They use any, uh, approximately, I'll say a million a month is a pretty steady number. One point two, one point five, and we have probably close to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in water payments from those guys. So, we'll have them hook it up onto the other side, run it for a month and see what the delta is. And we'll see.
There's two meters down there now, if you don't know that.
So it came in, it must've just come in.
Was put on over the weekend.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Cause it was Thursday, Friday when I found out about it.
But how many months was there no meter being used? Cause I would go down there and see them with the white hose with the meter on it laying on the ground and the hard hose in the back of the truck.
All right, well, I'll speak to Curtis.
When I asked the gentleman, what's going on, this isn't being metered, he says, you talk to somebody in that building over there. I said, I'm not gonna talk to the building. I'm not gonna talk to anybody.
They should know.
Listen, if you got anybody wants to shut it down, let us know and we'll, we'll be down there. Because it's a little dangerous and intimidating for somebody to be down there when they don't know particularly who you are either.
Well, I don't know who they are.
They shouldn't be on village property.
And they're on village property.
Off business hours.
Of course they're on village property because you know that they have a water license to haul water.
Does not mean they can go on village property and take water. Unaccountably.
How, how can you?
How do you know how many gallons go through?
And what I said to you before.
They don't know the village.
Can you let him respond?
Got it.
No, you don't have it, cause you think it's okay because he has a water license. He's not a village employee.
No, I got it. And you'll know every dollar and every cent and any drop that's coming out, cause they'll be hooked up to the, to the meter. Yep. And then we'll do the delta and we'll figure it out.
Maybe they need to go and investigate his villalating to curious Joel or whoever he's selling the water to and find out how many gallons he's selling them versus how many gallons he took.
If somebody wants to do that.
But that would be, you can get an investigator.
You're selling, am I gonna pay an investigator for, for, for a, a water company?
You're telling us it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars we're gonna make this year on that. That's a lot of money. Maybe it should be two hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, that's the, that's an obvious answer. That's an obvious answer. It might as, it could be half a million dollars.
But that's why you'd wanna find out the villalating.
So at the end of the day, we're gonna put the other piece of equipment on there. You said it's already there.
It's very on there. It was on there Sunday.
And we'll make sure that they're going through the meter. Done?
Can, can we put a rules plaque it up like we have the pickleball court so the water guy knows the rules down there?
Sure.
We might need a resolution and have to have that.
Make sure it's got the right number on it.
Yeah, you gotta do what you need to do and make everything legitimate.
I've been sarcastic to you guys and not to them.
I was sarcastic to you.
Michael.
Mike, question on block street. Um, Tom, just two questions about crosswalks. They, uh, on Aherne, they haven't painted those on there? Are they going to paint those crosswalks back? I know they did the striping, but I, I don't see other crosswalks painted. I don't believe they are.
I was looking at the crosswalk.
And the other thing is regarding crosswalks. I was in Springfield, Massachusetts the other day and they've got these crosswalks with these yellow flashing lights. And I know you guys have talked about it before.
Yep.
But that improves safety so much, especially in front of Chase Bank, the old Chase Bank. The old Chase Bank.
You can't do it there.
Why not?
You've got the traffic signals there.
It's ninety-four, we don't own the road.
It's state.
So the, the locations that were, and I just received some stuff and hopefully it's for this grant. So, we put in for Stewart and the bank, that crosswalk right there. And we're gonna obviously need a DOT permit to make that happen, right? We're gonna, we put in for one at Stewart across North Street. That's ours, so we don't have to permit the state for that. We're talking about, uh, Aherne in North Street. So that when people are driving, there've been a couple of accidents up there with kids and, and stuff like that. On Brotherhood by Cartwheel Court, cause the seniors that are coming down, that, that, they're coming that direction. And I'm just going from memory, there may be one another. So, all in all, I think these, uh, were in the neighborhood of eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars. And you get two, they run wirelessly, they're solar. And, yeah, and when I went, when I was down in Westchester, I saw them. I came up and I investigated the, the pricing and, and all that stuff and I submitted for a grant.
So because there's traffic lights there, you can't put one of those markers?
No. Cause you already have a control.
It's also on ninety-four. It's a state on highway.
Yeah.
They would have to put it there or not.
Yeah, and that's what, we, we gotta get the permit. But if they told me anything that has a traffic signal in place, you can't add this, cause it would cause confusion.
The only, the only other thing I wanna mention, the location of those buttons. You cannot tell which button to hit to cross the street. It still is not marked. Um, if you think that you're hitting the right button, you know, you would think the one that's going parallel to two oh eight and the one parallel to ninety-four would be the button to hit, but it's really, it's confusing and it doesn't really, I hit the button and that turned the other signal on. The one, I think, by Brother Plaza.
Is it that the buttons are turns in a different direction or the markings of what belongs to what?
What, what road is what, what, it, it, are you, like if I'm crossing, say, Aherne, there, on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It actually turned up the, uh, light going across ninety-four. That one gave me a crosswalk. It's, it's not clear. It's not clear.
You don't know which button is for which light?
Which, which street you're crossing. Trust me, if you go there and check it out.
Yeah, we'll put a call into the DOT folks. We'll have them come in and.
I mean, I could even write on the freaking thing.
But I know, it seems that simple, right?
It is that simple, but I thought about doing it actually.
So you're talking about ninety-four and two oh eight?
I took about the three locations. The one over, uh, by the old Chase Bank, those, those two, those two intersections where the light is.
Right.
And we can't put those. The one by Aherne, Aherne by Stop and Shop, that one there is another one.
New Brotherhood Plaza Drive?
Yes, Brotherhood Plaza Drive. There you go.
Yeah, 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 okay. So everything that's on ninety-four, two oh eight?
Yes, those three, basically. It might be that I'm just dumb, but I don't think so. I'll leave that up to you guys after you check it out.
I'll meet you in more than ten.
Thank you.
We'll stand there and push buttons.
Regarding crosswalks, I'd like to see the police department start writing cards. That, that crosswalk by Stewart's, people stand there, nobody stops.
I do.
I do too, but you and I, you're the only two meetings.
I do.
Nobody stops. They keep on going. And I can stop and they keep on coming at me. Sixty-one East Main, there's a crosswalk there. You might as well forget that.
Yeah.
And then down by the high school with the kids crossing, I think, I'd like to see them just write some tickets. Every community's different, you know? You go to Walworth, those people step off the curb, the car comes to a screeching halt. And it's, it's, you know, enforcement encourages compliance and that's what they're doing over there. But we need to, they need to, it, it's horrible seeing somebody stand by Stewart's, can't cross the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that, uh, summer's over, any update on irrigation?
Still working on it.
Could we just set policy instead of waiting for the code? Can the board set a policy while we're doing all of that?
There's so much more to that, Vinnie. I wish it was that easy that we could just sit here and say that we're going to allow it. Because you have to deal with pricing, number one. Who's paying for it? Okay. There have to be backstop, backflow stop meters. There's gonna have to be inspections to make sure.
Put it on the application, I think, like the AP does.
But we have to arrange also for regular inspections because there are people who will only outgo and bypass their interior meter and use only that meter to run their house. So how, what insurance do we have then unless we go in and do regular inspections? All that has to get written up.
So, how far are we?
I'd say if.
You said like ninety percent last time.
Yeah, and I have those returnative view. It's not a high priority thing to them either, you know? There is other things that we're working on to get this done.
By next summer, okay?
I, your lips to God's ears.
Okay. John, I'm sorry, John, I didn't see.
Yeah, John Dawson, uh, for Emerson Drive. A couple of meetings ago, somebody, uh, I think it was trustee Jack Rosso mentioned that the village codes are being updated or consolidated. Is, is the current one available on the website?
It's, um, um, no, I don't know if it's on the website anymore. I mean, you can Google Washingtonville, um, codes, but there is a banner like I explained earlier. Under construction because they're under construction.
Who, who would I contact or reserve process if I had a suggestion or I thought about a change to one of the, the laws?
Us.
Okay.
We're already having these discussions right now.
Right. Good.
Thank you, John. Teresa?
Um, the Mexican restaurant that was just recently shut down. We walked the trail rail behind that. So it brought us behind that building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a van back there that hasn't been moved probably forever. It's got flat tires. It looks like it's filled with garbage. There's a whole bunch of bottles and stuff. It's just a lot of crap.
Okay.
Back in there, so I don't know.
Haven't you noticed there was a license plate on it?
I'll check my camera. I took some pictures.
No, you're gonna talk about your house like that. Chief, maybe somebody could check that out tonight?
Yeah, I think it's a building code violation. It's not for storage, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if it's plated or anything, weird.
I think it's several building code violations.
Tires are flat, the car is filthy, but nobody's trying to.
Okay, Ben?
Any update on the, uh, short-term rental law that we have on the books?
Not much other than we need some conversations about it. Um, and you know, there is something on the books. But the discussion just needs to be, I guess, do we wanna do short-term rentals? And, you know, part of that is how do we enforce that? How do you get everybody registered?
Infected?
Sorry?
An occupancy, occupancy facts would be nice.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, at the end of the day, that's, that's the beautiful side of things. You know, we have to.
I'm just saying.
We have to create a law, we have to send it up to Albany, we have to get, send in an assembly to approve it. And then it comes back and then we're, we're able to, you know, move forward. But it's the management of it. Um, and I was gonna reach out to other communities that are dealing with it and, and get their feedback. As far as how much time does it take a building department to manage it? Or how are they managing it? How do they do all the registrations? And then, when all that stuff is done?
Yeah, I did.
So that's kinda, it's, it's not high on the totem pole, but it's, it's.
Revenue generating, you know?
Yeah.
New York State is actually currently, um, writing legislation themselves to tax short-term rentals. I believe it'll probably be easier once they have theirs in place for us to piggyback off of that. Cause what'll happen is once they create it, the, these websites that, that offer that for sale will have to comply with that. They'll be notified when an individual municipality does it. We have to notify them as well.
Yeah, cause they'll, they'll automatically take that fee.
Correct, yeah. Every time they, they rent it, it's gonna be part of the fee. So like I said, once New York State does that and they've been notified by the state, it makes that much easier for us. I've been watching that.
I don't, I don't see those budgets, uh, those audits on the budget, on the budgets.
No, I don't see the audits in the queue that don't know.
Okay. I'll give it to Steve. I'll have to check with him. Thanks, Paul.
Is there an ethics meeting, Wednesdays?
Ethics?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Cancelled?
They canceled.
Any other questions, guys? If not, have a motion to move into executive session for personnel issues.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good night.